Buenos dias, Manana Sidoos. Good morning, everyone. We are back in session. We are on the second reading file. That's where we left off and we are on... Sorry. Resolution number 291-36COR. Senator Duñez, you have the floor.
Hafa Day, good morning, Madam Speaker and to our colleagues. Madam Speaker, at this time, I move to accept Resolution 29136COR as substituted on the floor,[958.00][959.00]introduced by myself, James C. Moylan, V. Anthonyada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Teloty Tategui,
We're good.
relative to terminating the declaration of state of public health emergency under the Emergency Health Powers Act of Title X Guam quote annotated, pursuant to 19405C of Article 4, Chapter 19, Title X Guam Code Annotated, in order to restore the civil rights of the people of Guam based on finding that the occurrence of illness, health, or health condition that caused emergency does not or no longer possesses a high probability of large number of deaths in the affected population, large numbers of incidents of serious permanent or long-term disability in the affected population, or significant risks or substantial failure, or excuse me, substantial future harm a large number of people in the affected population. Make that motion at this time, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to substitute Resolution number 291-36COR on the floor. Is there any objection to that motion? To substitute, yes.
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Just...
Senator Sinocin.
If we can have a few minutes to go over it so we can, we know what the substitute is.
All right, or if the author could summarize the changes in the subversion?
Sure. I don't have a problem with the recess, but point of information, Madam Speaker, I should have probably expanded on this. Legal sent me last night technical corrections as to form and style, and they also sent the relevant portion of the public law on the public health emergency whereby it terminates the public health emergency. So they have inserted that basically verbatim from the law, but I have no problem taking a recess for colleagues to review.
Senator Duñez, is that the second to the last whereas clause?
That's correct. The second to the last whereas clause is a verbatim extraction from the statute to ensure that we are actually having the proper language within the resolution to be voted on that would terminate the public health emergency.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Sinocin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, with that clarification, then I will draw my request for recess. I just needed that upfront so we know where we're going. Thank you.
Jesus Mossi, Senator Sinocin. All right, so on the motion to substitute the resolution on the floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
At this time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make an opening statement on the, on the resolution.
Please proceed and move to place, yeah.
Okay, I've been instructed by the clerks that we move to place.
Please proceed, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. It's so nice to be here to debate Resolution 29136 in the bright light of day. We have now had eight working days for the public to review and see exactly what we're going to do today to discuss the potential of terminating the current public health emergency that we are in. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the staff and everyone who worked very hard to ensure that this resolution was prepared for debate. Madam Speaker, at this time, I believe we have way more questions than answers when it comes to the current public health emergency that we are in. Madam Speaker, there's been extensive discussion about the waving or about the issue of the Supplemental Nutritional Program known as SNAP, which takes care of our individuals who are having difficulty and are in public assistance with having food resources and the ability to have food to eat. I'm certainly sympathetic with that, Madam Speaker. However, as we've seen and I will demonstrate during the Committee of the Whole, there are a number of states who have remedied this situation through a narrow state of public health emergency and not being in a voluminous, large state of public health emergency for various other reasons. Madam Speaker, in the end of the public hearing on Resolution 29136, even yourself said, "I have so many questions to ask, but because the night and the hour was late and we did not go past 10 o'clock very much, there were many questions that were not asked, particularly questions that are fiscal in nature," Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Stafford Act is contained in this resolution, and I want to thank Senator Moylan because he was actually one of the individuals who made the amendment to my original proposal to ensure that the Stafford Act is included in this resolution. I think we will demonstrate once again in discussion with Homeland Security and other officials that the Stafford Act is the state, the national government's declaration. Alongside the national government's declaration, I have reports from Congress that are updated that will show many states not in a public health emergency but utilizing all the programs that we've been authorized to use on Guam, Madam Speaker. As far as I'm concerned and as far as I've been corresponding with federal officials, federal presidential declaration trumps all. Madam Speaker, we are not in a hurry to end the public health emergency. We are in a hurry to get reports to the people. We are in a hurry for transparency. We are in a hurry for accountability. We are in a hurry for proper procurement. We are in a hurry for making sure that hiring is done through the merit system, particularly after two years of being out into this public health emergency. Madam Speaker, this issue is a matter of fiscal policy. This issue has the potential to be equivalent to what we debate on this floor, similar to our budget process. So for that reason, Madam Speaker, at this time, I move that we resolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purposes of bringing in administration officials, and the following is my request. Department of Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense, Samantha J. Brennan, BBMR, Lester Carlson, DOA, Ed Byrne, CMH, Lilian Posadas, and the CFO or ASO, Public Health, Art Sinocin, and the ASO, the National Guard, Senator Fernando Stavis, and those individuals, Madam Speaker, I believe will be able to take and answer questions that this body may have or will have with regard to debating this very important resolution. So that's my motion at this time, Madam Speaker, to resolve into the Committee of the Whole to bring in administrative officials for question and answer.
On the motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole on Resolution 291-36, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Jesus Mossi, Madam Speaker.
We will, the audio will adjust the platforms and we will invite the the panel members in. I have invited them in advance, most of those. I have invited them in advance, most of those. Okay. We're back from recess. We are now in the Committee of the Whole. Before we begin, I'd like, as the Sergeant of Arms, to please swear in our panel, and we will have them introduce themselves after their sworn in.
Let's try this one more time. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Madam Chair, you may proceed.
Sisus Massey, Sergeant of Arms. Before we introduce the panel, I'd like to remind my colleagues that the materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder labeled MDD22 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, 36gl-session@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. All right. The rules of engagement are that each senator will be given a total of 15 minutes to ask questions, make comments, or make amendments on the resolution. We will go in three rounds, and each senator can use all their allotted 15 minutes as they see fit during those rounds. For example, a senator can use all their allotted 15 minutes in one round or spread out over the course of three rounds. However, I ask that all amendments be held until the third round, and we will continue to inform you when you have reached five minutes, and the clock will monitor your time so that you can keep track of it yourself. We'll now introduce the panel. We could start on that end.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. David Cruz, Recovery Director, Public Assistance.
Hoffidy Hafidh, Director of Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense.
Hoffidy Marie Kanga, Guam Homeland Security.
Good morning, Samantha Brennan, Guam Homeland Security Advisor.
Good morning, Edward Byrne, Director, Department of Administration.
Gwyneth Hafidh, Terry Ugon, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Maria Teresa Archangel, Chief Administrator for the Division of Public Welfare, Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Fernando Estevas, Public Health Incident Commander.
Hoffidy Stephanie Mendiola, Deputy Attorney General of the Division of General Counsel, Office of Attorney General.
Sisus Massey, to all of you for being here this morning and for being here promptly at 9:00. I really appreciate that. All right. In the interest of time, I'm also going to ask each rep from the agencies on this panel to -- who've been invited here to address the question of fiscal impacts from ending the public health emergency, I'm going to ask them to please address the question of impacts, especially fiscal impacts, to ending the public health emergency. After that, I'm going to ask the panel to keep their answers brief and straight to the point of the questions that are asked of them from my colleagues so that we can get through this as efficiently as possible. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused, and the third round is for amendments or comments. After we complete discussion of the resolution, I will allow the sponsor to close, and I will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report the resolution as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. Sisus Massey. We'll begin with the main sponsor of the resolution, Senator Dwyane -- oh, sorry. I said I would allow the panel members to speak. I will begin with the Recovery Office, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm the Director of Recovery, as well as the Public Assistance Program, and administer over close to $100 million of federal FEMA grants. Right now, 18 of those projects, what they call projects, that move through the whole process from beginning to the end, the life cycle of the project, there's about $37 million that have been obligated and approved. And the rest of the balance is working its way through the approval and review process. So potentially, the impact, if you end this emergency, we could lose over $16 million for federal grants. That's the bottom line. And I'm open to answer any questions.
Sisus Massey. And from the Office of Homeland Securities, Ms. Brennan, if there's anything you'd like to say in advance, otherwise, okay. Mr. Byrne.
Good morning, Senators. Actually, the fiscal impact of this resolution is probably unknown because it depends how the resolution finally turns out. But in support of what Mr. Cruz said, there is a potential impact on FEMA receipts and an unknown impact on the materials, in particular, test kits and vaccination kits that we've been receiving from the federal government free of charge. Because they're free of charge, I'm not in a position to be able to tell you what the fiscal impact might be, but fiscal impact there will be.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And we'll now hear from Public Health. This is the Deputy Director.
Hoffidy, thank you, Madam Chairman. The impact, of course, would be very devastating as far as Ireland and our services that are provided through public health. The financials, of course, how that would impact our programs such as the Supplemental Nutritions Program, certain services around kits and vaccines, our ability to continue to provide those services on the level in which they're needed would be impacted as well. So definitely, there is a physical impact as well as the impact of services to our island's people. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Ms. Archangel.
Well, ending the PHE, Guam PHE, will definitely impact the SNAP program because of the supplemental emergency allotments that our clients receive. So though there is an additional month beyond Guam PHE, just recently, we received an email that it was extended, so it's a 90-day expiration. So it will cost Guam roughly $7 million if we end the PHE.
Could you please say what PHE is?
Oh, Public Health Emergency. It was just extended. The national was just extended.
For COVID-19 operations, the fiscal impact is not significant to the actual operations, but having the funding available is one part of it. But the PHE would cause significant operational challenges because then the personnel running the operations, the vast majority of them will be immediately removed from the services provided to the community.
The AG's office doesn't take a specific position on terminating the public health emergency, but we do defer to the subject matter experts of our client agencies as to what the funding and fiscal impacts will be. But we're happy to try to help answer any questions the senators may have today.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll begin now with the sponsor, Senator Dwyane.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Certainly appreciate the panel being here and the representations that have been made this morning. Madam Speaker, I think it's important at this time that I read from the Congressional Research Service informing legislative debate since 1914. It's titled, and this is from, this is a United States Congress research document, "Expiring State COVID-19 Emergency Declarations: Effects on Federal Aid." This has been updated as of April 7, 2021. Some states, tribes, and territories herein states may consider extending or sunsetting their state-level emergency and disaster declarations as states make progress in containing the coronavirus disease, 2019 COVID-19 pandemic. Regardless of the state decisions, the federal declarations of public health emergency under Section 319 of Public Health Services Act, 42U.S.C., 20247D, two national emergencies under the National Emergencies Act, 50U.S.C., 1601E.T., Esquire, and the Robert T. Stafford Act and Emergency Assistant Act, 42U.S.C., 5121ETSEC, herein Stafford Act, and major disasters for each state also under the Stafford Act remain in place. The insight examines the potential impact of lapsing state emergency declarations on the availability of federal aid, either generally or with respect to certain expenses, provided that the Stafford Act as well as six COVID-19-related supplements. Number one, the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriation Act, 2020. Number two, the first Coronavirus Response Act, FFCRA, Public Law 116127. Number three, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, P.L., Public Law 116-136. The Paycheck Protection Program and Healthcare Enhancement Act, Public Law 116139. The Continuing Appropriations Act, 2021, and Other Extensions Act, Public Law 116-159, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Public Law 117-2. To find provisions wherein assistance is tied to state declarations, CRS re-queried the six acts listed above, which I believe all are what Guam is operating under. And using the term "state," because territories are included, and various word declarations, due to the complexity and volume of legislative language and limitations of text searching generally, identified examples may be reviewed in the following. Emergency Response Programs Activities: The termination of a state emergency declaration does not directly impact the availability of the Stafford Act assistance of COVID-19 pandemic administered by FEMA. The Stafford Act declarations for COVID-19 pandemic authorize public assistance, PA, for emergency protective measures. So with that, Madam Speaker, the six items are identified. I want to go down the line with each of the agencies presented as their opening testimony and ask direct questions to these individuals as per this research. First of all, go to Mr. Cruz and Ms. Samantha Brennan, and they can, of course, defer to their subject matter experts. Mr. Cruz, this research shows that the Stafford Act, as well as the Presidential Declaration and all the programs enumerated, are national declarations which are not tied to public health state emergencies of the states or territories. Can you please provide a black and white that says you need to be under a state of public health emergency under the state government in order to be able to utilize your funds in the potential loss of $16 million?
Not sure if I really understand the gist of this whole thing. You're saying that the Stafford Act still provides funding even if we end it, public health emergency?
That's correct, Mr. Cruz. In fact, I have a map of states, which has been provided, and I hope we can provide it to the panel, Madam Speaker. I have a map of over 42 states that are currently not in a public health state emergency and are administering FEMA funds and other funds without their state being in a public health state emergency. So I'm asking you, Mr. Cruz, do you have a document, a black and white, as we call it in the government, that states that you will lose $16 million if the state is not in a state of public health emergency?
I will have to get back to you. I think I would have to consult with FEMA and our legal folks in order to answer that question.
So I ask the same question to you, Mrs. Brennan.
Likewise, I'd have to get back to you. I do not have that document or anything that pertains to that at this time.
Mrs. Brennan and Mr. Cruz, you are aware that the Governor of Guam has been stating to the public that we absolutely have to be in this public state of public health emergency for the expenditure of your relative programs, and you're representing this morning that you do not have a black and white document that shows in order for your programs to continue, you have not brought that today to this legislature to put on the record that you are required to be in a state public health emergency to administer your programs. Is that your testimony?
As I mentioned before, I will have to get back to you on that.
Likewise, I'd have to get back to you, sir.
Madam Speaker, I just want to put this on the record during this round. I think it will be impossible to move forward, but I will continue without that information. That is critical information, Madam Speaker. I cannot overstate it at that point. Mr. Byrne, I need to ask this of yourself, since you do directly, I'm sure, associate all government funds crossover between federal, local. Do you have a document, a black and white document, that states in order for expenditure of funds under the Stafford Act or any other funding source that I just enumerated here that requires the state be in a state of public health emergency in order to be able to administer the national emergency?
Thank you, Senator. No, Senator, I don't have it because I was not asked to bring it. You read out some comments from the Congressional Budget Office, and if I remember correctly, the comment was that the local state of emergency declaration does not directly impact the receipts of payments under the Stafford Act. I don't know what the indirect effect of it is, but like my colleagues with notice, we can research that.
Okay. Well, I will make Okay. Well, I will make, I will make you aware of how other states are handling this, and you will be able to see through a map that I've provided the committee that you can review exactly how direct impact is avoided. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. I now move on to public health. You are a special individual, no question about it, because the SNAP program is identified in this, and please allow me to continue before you comment.
Sure.
Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, the FFCRA, Public Law 116127, included an authority for states to increase SNAP benefits. See Section 1101A, up to the maximum benefit amount. However, the state emergency declaration is required. I concur, is required. These increases refer to as emergency allotments. The provision is authorized only when both federal and state emergencies are in place, specifically in the event of a public health emergency declaration by the Secretary of Health and Human Services under Section 319, Public Health Service Act, based on an outbreak of coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19. At the issuance of an emergency or disaster declaration by the state based on an outbreak of COVID-19, without an active state emergency declaration, states would not be authorized to provide emergency allotments. I concur completely with you. Can I ask you, Mr. Deputy Director, have you, since this has been a very public discourse, and also to your program administrator, have you asked the governor to ensure that whatever happens with this particular resolution, that the governor do what so many other governors in states have done, which was issue a standalone or several other program areas of emergency in order to preserve your funding?
And I do apologize because there's a bit of an echo here in this room for me, but it sounded like you're asking if I've had that conversation with Guam's governor regarding the security of funding and the distribution of those funds in the event that the public health emergency goes away. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Governor.
Okay. No, sir, I have not had that conversation. I am actually not familiar with the Stafford Act. However, I don't know if that pertains to existing dollars only or if it also pertains to any new additional monies that may be coming down. So there's a bit of research that does need to be done. Thank you.
So you have not had any conversation with the governor. Are you aware of other states? I'll go to Tess Archangel. Are you aware of other states and jurisdictions since you're the program administrator? Are you aware of any other states or jurisdictions that have issued a state of public health emergency for standalone programs that have canceled their statewide public health emergency?
No, Senator.
Okay. Well, we'll provide you some documentation with regard to that because the very progressive Democratic governor in the state of Hawaii, Governor Ege, did exactly that. We'll provide that to public health, and you may want to ask the governor to consider adding you to a short list of agencies and programs to extend the public health emergency to preserve your programs. I just wanted to put that on the record. So moving over to Mr. Steves. Mr. Steves, I also will present, or you can review, Senator, the states who have ended their state-wide public health emergency. There have been several states that also have issued declarations that are narrow to the use of the National Guard, all resources. And once again, for the entire panel, we will show you as well, all of what you've stated to include the vaccinations, to include PPEs, to include everything else that other states have done on a narrow public health emergency to preserve that service delivery, to include vaccination clinics and the like. So, Mr. Steves, I guess I'm going to ask that of you at this point. Are you aware of other states and jurisdictions that have issued a narrow state of public health emergency to preserve resources and operations?
Senator Duenas, please note your time remaining out of 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. As part of my job, I'm familiar with what other jurisdictions are doing, though I've never, at least on my end in the question posed to me, ever made a statement that I'd said operationally services would be limited, but tied for other reasons that if the opportunity were to present itself, I would share. Financially and fiscally, it doesn't present an impact to my operations, as I stated before on the record. Speaking to the resolution before me now that I'm here to discuss, as you had mentioned in your research, which I'm also very familiar with, is that it has may have indirect, or it won't have direct effects, direct effects on FEMA's or public assistance under the Stafford Act. However, one example of an indirect effective response effort is that although the funding may be available for the National Guard in terms of our codification under Chapter 10, the activation of the National Guard, which is a separate component from the funding, is tied to local law. And so if the public health emergency were to end abruptly, regardless of whether funding was available by the federal government or not, the governor's activation and her authority as the commander in chief, my understanding, ends immediately. And so that's a very big concern operationally, and that's uncharted territories on what to do when there are orders that were cut all the way locally with approval from FEMA and the National Guard Bureau were to just end abruptly, and how you would get that jump started when the process itself through as close as we can get to normal COVID operations can take weeks to get that going. And so that would be one of the indirect examples of how ending our public health emergency can affect our ability to tap into funds that are available for the territory.
Senator, I don't have the date, but I believe you were sitting right next to the governor on the last press conference, and I can get the recording from the media where the governor said explicitly that the National Guard activation is her power as governor, and it does not require the national state of public health emergency. And all it does by having the current state of public health emergency is enhance basically the credibility of the program and the declaration, but her powers are not affected by the current public state of emergency because she has the power as governor to mobilize. And so that, that does, can I get a black and white on the fact that that would immediately cancel the current governor's activation of the guard for mobilization?
I can't speak to what the governor said in the testimony, only what I'm telling you in my position with the knowledge that I have through my research and accomplishing my duties, and I'm here testifying or sharing with the committee of the whole, my, my research, my understanding, my knowledge, under oath and penalty of perjury.
Correct.
You know, with the threat of going to jail or being fined, I don't know how much more black and white you can get as I'm here on the public record, but I can send you an email.
I would appreciate an email that demonstrates exactly what you've just stated, that the national public health emergency...
No, 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 no. Senator, I said the local public health emergency. If you look and review in terms of the governor's power, the governor doesn't have automatic power to activate the National Guard. That's done through local statute, and it specifically states, and it was in my testimony when I presented for 291, Resolution 291, that that's a separate statute in Guam law, completely detached from Chapter 19, Emergency Health Powers Act, and the PHE. The governor has the power, in my understanding and reading of the law and discussion with various legal counsel on it, is that the authority to activate the National Guard is completely separate from all of this and its contingent on a declaration of emergency. Now let me just state again clearly for the record, the activation of the National Guard, which is different from regular ceremonial-type operations where she can call them to service, but activation at the scale that we're talking about and under federal law, specifically Section 502F, which is a Title 32, right? That means they're activated locally, paid federally. So that's what that means. And so they're paid federally, but if we cannot activate them locally because the ending of the public health emergency and the relative law and authority completely separate from the Emergency Health Powers Act, that's the operational challenge and one of the primary reasons of my opposition to 291.
Okay. So Senator, then, I will demonstrate to you, and you've probably reviewed it, other states, as I have just said to public health, have included that as a narrow state of public health emergency, not having to be in the full-blown public health emergency that the governor is currently under as enumerated in this resolution.
Senator, with respect, I understand what you're trying to demonstrate to me, but what I'm, what I'm here and what I was told to come here and present on today was what's before me, right? Not what's prospectively or what can be done. In this situation, I have to look at what's before me, read the fine print, as you had mentioned, in black and white, and have to present how this affects my operations and in a broader view, how it affects the community. I can't speak to what the governor can and cannot do. That's not my purview or my place whatsoever, or what's in your prerogative either as a senator, only what's before me today, what had a public hearing, what you guys are set to vote on and express how this would directly impact my operations.
So Senator, you came to the public hearing. You've heard all the public discourse of this in the media and the like. Have you advised the governor that in the event of the termination of a public health emergency, it would be wise to issue an executive order, a narrow executive order allowing for the remaining of the activation of your services that you're currently overseeing?
Thank you for the question, Senator. As the incident commander, although I don't have subject matter expertise in every particular part, it's imperative that I have very good knowledge and close working relationships and deep understanding of what every part in its relation to COVID has to do and to piece that all together to have successful operations. So I want to, I want to preface with that. So in seeing that big picture, understanding and, you know, in my own research, seeing what other states have done in terms of doing the public health emergency for food, right, a food emergency, and having a narrow scope emergency for that, while any advice I give to the governor is obviously, is obviously privileged under executive privilege, I can say from my, my position that I would never advise any governor on declaring two emergencies to replace one. I think that only expands on the problem and complication when we have a tool before us that meets all the objectives. And just want to say that, again, I'm only speaking to one part of the operational concerns that this resolution has, not the other stuff. So did I advise the governor to do something else? That's, that's under executive privilege, right? But I'll tell you, I wouldn't advise the governor to do so. The PHE, in my opinion, is the best tool we have in the current situation that we're in.
Well, I would say that that's, that's your prerogative certainly, but I want to correct one statement. There is no reason to have two public health emergencies as other states have done it and as you've probably seen through your research and demonstrated by our presentation, that there is an expiration of the overall public health emergency, and then prior to that, there is an implementation to make sure that it's seamless, that when the state public health emergency ends, the new narrow-scoped emergency commences. So that is not two public health emergencies operating at once.
Yeah, yeah.
That is a termination of a public, a statewide public health emergency and a narrow scope that has been defined in a new executive order only for those operational requirements that the governor has. Madam Speaker, this time, I'd like to go ahead and allow for other panel members to ask questions, but I believe, Madam Speaker, I just want to put this on the record. Given the complete uncertainty that's been presented to us today in terms of substantiating the program requirements as being absolutely necessary other than what I provided, it's going to be very difficult to make a decision on this today. I just want to put that on the record at this round.
Sis Massey, Senator Duenas. Again, colleagues, you have 15 minutes total. You can divide that by three rounds, or you can use it all in one round. But last round of your 15 minutes or reserved time if you're going to make amendments, please. Senator Moylan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For this first round, I wish to yield my 15 minutes to the author of the resolution, at which time when he will be...
All right, you have 15 minutes total for the entire committee of the whole. Are you yielding that entirely?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right. Then Senator Ada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here today as we discuss this Resolution 29136. We had the public hearing over a week ago, and now here we are today in the Committee of the Hall. As, let me start off with Homeland Security. Have you guys started discussing an exit strategy from this current public health emergency?
Could you elaborate further when you talk about exit strategy in what regards into...
I mean, how are we going to get out of this public health emergency should the governor declare that there's no longer a need to extend the emergency declaration? How are we going to proceed forward? I mean, who's the lead agency? I guess that's the better question. Who is the lead agency in that? Senator?
Senator, that would be, be public health.
That would be public health? So let me go back to public health then. Public health, have you guys started communication with all the agencies or all involved with a meeting for an exit strategy on this current public health emergency?
I'd like to recognize that the Director of Public Health has now joined us in place of the Deputy Director. So Director Arts and Augustine's here, and he's been sworn in already.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With regard to your question, Senator Ada, no, I have not had a government-wide, agency-wide meeting with you to discuss with the agency heads the exit strategy.
Can, can you go ahead and use the, the regular wired microphones? Because I'm utilizing the earphones because the echo in here. So I just want to make sure I hear you guys clearly. So the current emergency declaration is extended to, I believe, May 1. Am I correct?
Uh, May 3, I believe, is the expression.
Okay, May 3. So if the declaration was called off on May 3, what, what was the plan going to be? Okay, back to...
Senator, that's actually my purview. So in, in my, my position as incident commander, with the relevant agencies that are participating in COVID response, we do, we do meet on the frequent. And there was, there is a plan that was first actually developed on our, as our exit strategy for Delta, which was put on pause. And obviously, we've had to rework, and we've seen in the community pieces of that, of that, right, with the screening at the airport, ending of QFAC isolation, alternative care facility, downsizing of clinics that are all phased based on operational data, based on demand, right, if we're providing a public service. But I do want to clarify that our response efforts are not tied to the public health emergency. It's not the public health emergency that, that drives our response efforts. The public health emergency is a tool utilized in the response efforts. The global pandemic of COVID-19 is what drives our response effort. So turning off the public health emergency does not turn off our response efforts. It only makes it significantly more difficult at this current time to provide the services that we've deemed are still necessary to keep us in this low state of transmission and sickness within our community. And so all of these things are attached, but it's not the public health emergency that drives our response efforts. Those are going to continue for years to come regardless of the public health emergency.
So then if we were to stop the, if the governor was to stop the public health emergency, her extension of it, then the funding that we are, that you guys are all speaking about, direct or indirect funding, how would you guys be able to move forward without it?
So there's two sets of funding that we utilize for, actually, three sets of COVID-19 funds that we utilize for operations. One, our federal grants, generally from HHS, CDC, but are very limited in scope and don't, don't for the most part provide the necessary manpower needed. And that gap is then filled, for now, has been filled by the National Guard, which has been a great support to the entire community throughout this response. which has been a great support, uh, to the entire community throughout this response, and that is, uh, direct, uh, federal funding through that. Um, the third one, third funding source we utilize are local funds when necessary, when there are no federal grants that would cover it, and in those instances, almost, um, I wanna say well over ninety percent of the time, eligibility for reimbursement is, is, um, at least inquired or researched before those funds are ever expended, and that's to take advantage of the hundred percent, um, cost share. So the hundred percent reimbursement, that extends through July first.
So currently, all the cost share, or the reimbursable expenses to Gov Guam is, we're, we're currently on par with that, and so, all expenses that government has paid out of local funding, or the third source of fund, like you mentioned, were, were on track to receive all those fundings back?
I, I could only speak to the funding that was within my purview, that was COVID-related. Um, there are different agencies that had their own, um, eligibility under their respective o- federal oversight, um, where they availed themselves, um, and took advantage of those, uh, eligible expenses, right? Um, that's, now, I can't speak for those agencies specifically, though, as the incident commander, I did encourage them to maximize and utilize these available opportunities to either make improvements or put in safety measures that were eligible expenses under FEMA, and then make sure that they get those packets. So that's the extent of, of, um, of that with, uh, the external agencies.
So there's no one individual who has old, complete oversight of all reimbursable funding back to Gov Guam that's in charge currently?
That would be the Recovery Office, Miss, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, so currently, are we on track to receive back all funding that has been expended, as Senator Fernandez Seves said, that are reimbursable?
Yes, absolutely, uh, since the pandemic's still ongoing, we haven't closed out a lot of the projects, so as the pandemic, uh, and as we, uh, incur these expenses, depending whether it's a small project or a large project, a lot of the agencies will, will submit a reimbursable claim, you know, to FEMA, and we have to make sure all the documents are in place, and that all the just, justifications are also in place, so that'll determine how much reimbursement they'll get.
Do we have any questionable current, questionable or denied reimbursement?
Uh, there's been some determination memos, uh, issued, but it hasn't gone through the process of, uh, what they call, uh, challenges or appeals yet, so that is not, not final yet. You know, the agencies still have a right to appeal, you know, if they get their reimbursement denied, uh, right now, uh, nothing yet has, has gone through on that, so we're, we're on target to get most of the reimbursements back.
So what is the current, uh, amount of questionable or, uh, funding that you think is gonna be questioned by the, the federal government about for reimbursement?
It kinda depends on, on the size of the project, uh.
Yeah, but overall, since you're the overall.
Yeah.
Indi- uh, individual responsible for that, what are we looking at in, in dollars?
In dollars?
Are we looking at several million, couple of million?
Maybe a couple million dollars, yeah. But like I said, uh, it's, it's not all lost yet, because it hasn't gone through the appeal process yet, and, and the agencies still don't have the official memo telling them that, that, you know, the, uh, the project will go under a determination memo.
Okay, thank you. Madam Speaker, I'll currently yield my time and, for the second round?
If you yield your time, you're yielding your remaining time.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll just, uh, I'll hold off until the second round, yes.
All right, thank you. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the fact that the panels here, I think, had this dialogue began almost, or a little over two years ago, we probably wouldn't be here today, having this discussion, asking questions on information that should have been readily available to us and to the public. Um, I wanna follow up, certainly, I think Senator Ada had a very key point with regards to what is the plan, because we have yet to hear, what is the administration's plan to address exiting from this pandemic? At some point, there's gonna be a trigger point, and that point is when, when it's determined through, uh, the efforts of, of the reporting, as to whether or not any more of our people are affected by this pandemic, and as those numbers continue to dwindle, let's be hopeful, certainly to your efforts and many in the public health sector, and to our medical community, and all the support personnel that have been involved in getting us to where we are today, and certainly our people in, in complying with, uh, many of the mandates that have been imposed upon them. That, we assume if we're, we're on track with what we've heard publicly, should not be that far away, if we're looking next week to not having to wear these masks outside, and if things, the numbers continue to stay low, certainly, Mr. Director from Public Health, uh, I guess, not too far from that, uh, we'll have to, we'll be able to remove these masks indoors. So we know there's gotta be a trigger point, at some point, the federal government's gonna probably ask, if we're continuing to request these emergencies, um, if we're not, if we're there, what is the plan? Because we've not seen the plan, we've not heard the plan. Uh, I sat, there's only a handful of us senators that sat through that hearing for over four hours into the late evening, uh, with a number of you, uh, we didn't have that information provided, and from my perspective as a pub, policymaker, I hear from your perspective why you wanna hold on to it, but overall, in terms of our community, and in order to recover and move forward, because we do have an economy to rebuild here. Uh, Uncle Sam is generous, as he's been, I doubt we'll continue to just fund and fund and fund and fund, uh, because we wanna extend the, the process of receiving the money, so if I can ask the Director of Public Health first, uh, what point does that trigger? When you really receive a, a low number of individuals in our community that are testing positive? Uh, then where do we go from there? What, what was, what is the exit plan from public health, once that happens?
Well, you, uh, Senator Brown, um, we, it's not so much an exit plan, it's gonna be continuation of surveillance activities, because, um, what we're seeing also is a re, re, uh, reinstatement of mask wearing, uh, we've already seen recently the extension of the national or the nationwide public health emergency, it was just going to be effective, I believe, April sixteen, for ninety days out, and then we also have now another CDC guideline that's continuing mask wearing, so I, I hear your question, I just wanna be sure, is yes, we're seeing the numbers in terms of positive cases per day, per one hundred thousand go down, we are though seeing more admissions, and, um, the other category that we're looking at, if I may just look at this, um, major metrics here, is, um, just wanna be sure I give you all the right information. So we're looking at the CDC community level in terms of new cases in the past seven days, the admissions at the hospitals, and the percentage of staff invasion beds, and so we're now working with a high, medium, and low category, and so, we're gonna continue to do surveillance, because we just don't know what's out there, and so it's not so much an exit, but, um, us to be able to pivot, and so within public health and social services, we continually work with the idea that as where we are today, we are returning employees back to their original posts that they were hired for to conduct their work activities, however, they've also been informed and advised, and the division heads as well, that should a surge be on the horizon, that we need to be able to pivot back and reinforce and build capacity, but that also speaks not just to public health and social services, that also speaks to just the Guam community. And so, come May third, uh, the numbers continue to be the way they are, that we are lifting the mandates, the restrictions, uh, but will they ever be considered? They may be, and that's something in working with the governor, uh, and the Lieutenant Governor, and the advisory group that we have in the morning, made up of physicians, epidemiologists, uh, and just subject matter experts, that we then look at what's before us, and what the threat is. Uh, incident commander Fernando did share that it's not so much an exit strategy, but looking at frequency occurrence and data, we have scaled back the quarantine situation at the processing of the airport, air travelers now, there is no quarantine, we've scaled back on and closed out the quarantine site, so there's a transition, and we hope this transition and the road we're going down, this path we're going through continues, uh, but we will continue to monitor what's happening stateside, uh, a lot of times, we see that what's happening elsewhere comes on our shores within maybe three weeks or so, so we just wanna be prepared, and I think it's really always a mindset of being state of preparedness for public health and social services more than an exit. Uh, I don't know that we'll ever exit, uh, from this virus, or, or any other public health emerging infectious diseases that we may encounter.
Have you outlined what those steps are, even in this transitional or this ongoing? Because I mean, today it's COVID, before then it was dengue, tomorrow it could be tuberculosis.
Right, yes.
I mean, there's all kinds of sad reality, but that's the world, right? All kinds of different things can happen at any given time.
Correct.
So we understand the vigilance that public health will need to maintain, but with regards to this particular issue, uh, so what is the plan? Even if you have to continue to monitor, let's say the numbers continue to stay low, what is the plan? Because the public is not informed, it's nice that you guys are having your advisors, and the physicians are advising the administration, and you guys are all engaged, but that information has not been public, from the very beginning, even the Physicians Advisory Group, even though many of us know the doctors that sit on the Physicians Advisory Group, that are, you know, responsible individuals, but even that information was never really made public as to how determinations to impose restrictions on our people were determined, and I think it's that lack of engagement that's led us to where we are today, maybe a certain degree of distrust, uh, because that has not been forthcoming, and the public has not been as directly engaged with regards to the decisions that have been made, that have led to the frustration. Uh, today, you, I think we all recognize that the legislature does have authority, because yes, the legislature can terminate through this resolution, this emergency. I don't know why it took this long, I don't know why the previous legislature did not demand it, there are members of this body that have abdicated their responsibilities as leaders, to ask these questions and be engaged, so that our public can be informed, because ultimately, it's our people that are directly impacted by that. If I could ask for each of the departments that are receiving the federal funds, um, to what timelines do you have that these funds are, are at least what you've been notified by the federal government, how long will they continue to provide it for your different programs, be it SNAP, or whatever other programs that we're receiving, what is the timeline? Is it indefinite?
The timeline, Senator Brown, no, it is not indefinite, there are, uh, varying du- um, end dates for these grants, they're not all expiring the same year, uh, the flexibility also changes with the declaration of public health emergency, then also, I wanna share with the body this, this morning, that there is also opportunities, again, for additional funding for Guam, and that the additional funding is to build public health infrastructure in response and in support of the public health emergency, so there's also a national recognition that there's going to be the opportunity for Guam to apply for this grant, so that we can continue, as I was saying, activities like surveillance, and if we see numbers grow up, that we can do contact tracing, and that we build that infrastructure of, from what we have today, and just build upon that, and also data management, data system, so, uh, for Tess, for example, she's here, and, uh, I will speak, and if I misspeak, please, uh, you know, correct me, because for the SNAP, uh, Emergency Assistance, as Senator Duñez had very eloquently discussed, shared, that it requires a national and a local public health declaration, after the declarations come to, and let's just, for discussion's sake, say, I wanna say July, either went to effect in April, if it is not extended, and it's not extended here in Guam as well, uh, then, we have thirty days after that, ex- uh, expiration to continue one more month of the public health, uh, Emergency Assistance Program, but that's for a Emergency Assistance component that was provided through, and as a result of COVID nineteen. The continue, we will continue the SNAP program, so that core, if I may distinct that core in the E H, emergency, the core will remain in that program, so that, that it would be, for us, it's been many years, uh, I don't know, I would say the program would be indefinite, but probably, it'll continue through my lifetime, I mean, it's been here for many years, and it is there to assist our, our population, our households and families here in Guam, and many other places with regards to food subs- substance.
Well, and I, I think, Mr. Director, it, it's very important to distinguish that, because if we're gonna play the politics here, that, you know, if, if we pass this resolution, we're going to take, you know, literally, food and resources out of the mouth of many of our families, that's what the governor's directly said. I mean, I'm not expecting you to respond to that, that's not your, your position to do so, and I do appreciate you articulating the position of public health, but I think we need to clarify that, some of these issues need to be dissected, in terms of what existing programs will continue, what particular programs only exist under a state of emergency, uh, and timelines, because I'm sure the federal government, as I mentioned, I don't think they're gonna sit here and just, oh, Guam's, you know, three years from now still in a state of emergency, oh, we're just gonna keep the money rolling.
Right.
And I think the fact that some of that information only came out as a result of this resolution is a little bothersome, because it's not just us, I mean, trust me, we've all, many of us have been on either side of the aisle, and, you know, I didn't care for the legislature, and I wasn't in it myself, I didn't like being called down here, because I thought, who are they? But, you know, reality is, you know, we get elected by the people to represent the questions and concerns that the average person out there would want to have asked or addressed on their behalf, and I think the fact that we're here, like I said, is because that information has not been forthcoming, and the intent to use this as a means to claim that some members of this legislature want to harm our people by removing these, uh, programs that are being provided. Other thing I noticed in the course of that public hearing was that, uh, some of the personnel that have been hired to assist in the emergence, particularly in the healthcare area, that were given emergency certifications, we were told that, you know, if you pass this resolution, they're gonna be out of a job, that's as direct as the language was, they will be out of a job. Now, we understand we need to gear up for the emergency, but as, as we pull back from it, uh, there's other realities, you're not gonna need all these resources or personnel for that specific purpose, and I don't know what steps have been made to accommodate that, rather than threatening the legislature, all these people are gonna be unemployed, when they were hired specifically to respond to, to the COVID pandemic. What steps are being made? Is there even a request from the administration for extending a sort of, you know, a period of time, or grace period, to allow these individuals perhaps to get alternate training, maybe if they desire to continue to, to pursue their work in the healthcare area, or something that would allow a gradual step down, uh, so that we don't, you know, leave them out in the cold, so to speak, after they've done all this diligent work in helping our community? I mean, has anything been proposed forth, so that that can be addressed in an orderly fashion?
If I may, Senator Brown, it's, it's very specific, and it's very specific to the effort in our response. Um, in the response, I had asked, and through executive order, we were granted the authority to onboard E M Ts. Now, being an E M T trained person doesn't make you a medic in the fire department, it's part of the process, right?
I understand that.
So, what they were able to, and they're a resource in our community back then, to administer vaccines, and so we needed them, uh, their ability, our ability, in collaboration with the Department of, like, Administration for onboarding these folks, is, is, is situated in that executive order, under the public health emergency. What we've done, and I've talked to Xenia, who is our Nursing Resource, Xenia Fesina, our Nursing Resource Command, is to look at these two individuals, because today, we still need them, we're still doing vaccines and testing, and they're a resource, we're still doing homebound operations, and so we still need to get our, our vaccinators out there in the community, but I did already talk with Xenia, and I said, you know, Xenia, these two folks, what we're hearing with the resolution is that if this were to come into effect, it would also eliminate their, our ability to maintain them, we need to get them profiled, and see what other positions we could see they would be qualified for, under a limited term or temporary appointment, so that they could continue in our response effort, and I'm, I'm speaking just to, to that very specific group, because I made a very specific ask, well, I think it was December twenty twenty, that I made the ask and, and was, provided that tool, uh, through the public health emergency, it really, it serves as a tool for us to leverage resources in the community, and this is one example, they helped us with vaccination, we onboarded six, uh, we are now down at two, I'm, I'm grateful to hear that they've been interviewed, and they've been, of, accepting and have applied for other jobs, I think, at the fire department, and so, I'm, I'm grateful for that, but also more grateful that they were able to, we were able to find a way to bring them onboard, help us in our response to vaccinate Guam, and so, those two individuals are very dear to public health and social services, because we don't wanna, like, you basically said it, they were here, they helped us, we don't wanna put them out in the cold, so we definitely are looking internally, within the department, how we can assist their continued employment in, in the response effort, and, you know, we are doing some degree of recovery, but we're still looking at the response and, and maintaining that public health presence, thank you.
Well, and I appreciate your response as well, but I think that's the kinda dialogue we would have preferred to have, uh, to know what steps you're taking, or what can be addressed to that, versus being accused that we're throwing these people out into the cold, because that's what I heard, I was there, I was there every minute of this hearing, uh, and I just wanna put that on the record as well. I appreciate, Mr. St. Augustine, your time in responding, I do wanna ask Mr. Cruz, you're saying that, uh, a number of these, uh, funds that have been used, you're still going through the purpose, I guess, the process of closing out or reporting, uh, to address proper reimbursement, you mentioned a little earlier that about maybe two thou- two million is still outstanding, or has to go through the appeals process, is that the total amount out of the millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars the federal government has provided us, have you closed out for like twenty twenty, are you closing out for twenty twenty-one? How is that schedule being addressed? Because if, if, we wanna make sure, because we are in the dark, the public is in the dark with regards to how many of these millions of dollars has been spent, because all we have received is a listing of department and agencies, and amounts that have been encumbered, or amounts that are remaining, without any specificity, how millions of the people's money has been spent, and what it's been used for, and I have a concern about that, because I think when these issues are left in the dark, uh, there's an opportunity for unfortunate. uh, there's an opportunity for unfortunate things to happen. And sometimes people are irresponsible with the money they spend and then yet, and then the people are left to hold the bag or reimburse. Because we've been in a situation of in previous years, having to pay back local money to pay back federal money because of mistakes that have been made or abuse and misuse of federal funds. We have a track, we have a track record of that. So we certainly don't want to at this time when the government of Guam has received and the people of Guam have supposedly received more money than they ever have for a specific issue in its entire history. We certainly want to make sure that money is properly accounted for and public officials are not misusing those funds. So, uh, where are you with regards to that? You're saying there's only $2 million at this point that are in question out of the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars we've been provided so far?
Yes, that's correct. Two agencies in particular submitted claims there were millions of dollars and a lot of those claims were ineligible costs, you know, according to FEMA policy.
And what agencies are those?
Uh, Port Authority of Guam is one and the Department of Corrections is another one that I can recall. Now, they, they do have a, an appeal process and that hasn't gone through the appeal process yet, so we haven't lost any money yet.
Are we able to obtain these documents or public documents, I assume?
Soon as, uh, FEMA issues the official determination memo, which is pretty much a denial of their claim, as soon as they get that, then the appeal process starts click, uh, starts clicking, uh.
Have these denial letters been issued or you're anticipating them?
I got an advanced copy, but we, the, the agencies don't, haven't received the official memo yet from the FEMA director.
But you have a copy of it, you have a copy of it.
I've got a copy.
So you, that would be a public document? So we could FOIA that?
Yes.
I mean, you could voluntarily provide it, but we could also FOIA.
Yeah, no.
Okay, I appreciate that, Madam Speaker. I'll, I'll save my remaining time of five minutes and 43 seconds for the next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator, uh, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Ms. Juus Maas, Ms. Manana, Ms. Juus, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the panel members for being here this morning. I do know I only have 15 minutes and I have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to be real brief and get right to it. Um, one, you know, uh, I know we've talked about this earlier, but just to make sure Guam stands to lose over $2 million in monthly, uh, SNAP, uh, COVID-19 emergency allotments. The receipt of this supplemental benefit is dependent on both the public health, uh, deck, uh, emergency declaration and, um, the Secretary of Health and Human Service, right? And the local declaration. And for me, I think that over 15,000 families on Guam will be affected. From your understanding, how will we be able to continue this assistance in Guam if we have over 15,000 that will be affected?
Vice Speaker, just so I'm clear, you're asking public health and social services how we would cover this emergency assistance benefit if the public health emergency locally were not continued? We would have to rely on local funds. We don't, we would have to rely on local funds. We'd have to reach into our local pockets to fund that if we were to continue the emergency assistance benefit under the SNAP program.
Okay, thank you. Um, to my, to my knowledge, um, if the public health emergency is lifted, it would impact the ability of the hospitals to use the traveling nurses to help with staff shortages. I would ask, I know GMH is not here, if anybody up there would, uh, can answer, how many travel nurses would GMH stand to lose? Do, does any one of you know that answer? Madam Chair, maybe we can get that answer at the break or?
If I could offer, uh, we did ask that and they said that they have the ability to use travel nurses even today, I mean, I'm sorry, even before the pandemic, they always can use travel nurses. It's the cost, whether it's reimbursed or not, is, is what's at issue during the pandemic.
But did they, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Speaker, give an impact of the amount that would be lost if they used the, maybe Ed Byrne would have something to that effect?
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice Speaker. If I could answer the question from the other end, right? We have, um, received a FEMA reimbursement for travel nurses. Uh, the amount was like 10.4 million. Um, and I believe that was for costs incurred from the beginning of the program where they actually had travel nurses on island to last September, so it should be September 2021. We have a, a potential claim which is being progressed jointly by GMH and DOA because, because DOA actually had to, uh, advance the funding for travel nurses from that date to basically to, to current. How much it is obviously depends because the travel nurses that are actually, um, uh, on island vary from day to day. Uh, so I, it would be hard to extrapolate exactly how much is, is, is going to be lost. But you can see from the sums of money that we actually did recover, that they are considerable sums of money that might, will be, uh, possibly lost to us.
Thank you. Um, the Department of Public Health, um, would lose the ability to coordinate the use of hospital facilities to ensure that, uh, GMH does not become overburdened due to the specific need to have COVID-19 positive patients isolated. Is there currently a plan to add, address this without a public health emergency? I guess that would be for public health? Or anybody up here?
My apologies, Madam Vice Speaker. Could you just restate one more time and I'll, I'll venture to answer?
The Department of Public Health would lose the ability to coordinate the use of hospital facilities to ensure that the Guam Memorial Hospital does not become overburdened due to the specific need to have the COVID-19 positive patients isolated. Is there a cur, is there currently a plan to address this without a public health emergency? And I really shouldn't be timed for that, Ms., Madam Chair, because they asked, he asked me to repeat the question. I know I'm up against time, I've got literally 10 questions.
So to the first part of the question, and I'm understanding that as, as a two-part question, does the ending, does the resolution or ending of the public health emergency hinder the impact? Yes, absolutely. Um, the coordination of efforts between the two hospitals is specific to the Public Health Emergency and Emergency Health Powers Act that's associated with that. Um, with regard to, um, the plan moving forward, uh, the hospitals already have a very good working relationship. I won't venture too far to speak on their behalf. Um, however, as, as I've, I've mentioned previously in my statement, the PHE is a tool that is there should we need it and to allow time for not only public health, external agencies and partners, community partners, community health partners, as well as the hospitals, to work out, um, our, our plan and our situation going forward. Now, in terms of context, uh, Madam Vice Speaker, we had the Delta surge and immediately went into the Omicron surge. And so, you know, asking for plans is, yes, I, I completely understand that and there have been plans put in work. But if you look at the exhausted, you know, panel of healthcare administrators as well as the healthcare workers, um, that have endured two surges, right? Without any pause in between, um, we haven't had the full opportunity to hash out all of those details because the most significant players were most heavily inundated with response efforts, right? In order to manage the surge and get us to the situation we are today that this esteemed body can say it's all over. And so that didn't happen magically, that took a lot of effort and work and we have yet to get back into our office and this and even try to get to a point where we're working our way out of this with a very long-term solution, um, as well as the ability for surges, should it come.
Thank you for that. Um, my next question then is, um, without a local public health emergency declaration, the Guam National Guard will be immediately deactivated. Can public health still direct or authorize medical personnel like EMTs and the National Guard to provide vaccinations if the PHE is lifted? What programs will be impacted? I guess to both of you.
That would be a no, you're right, no. If the PHE is lifted, we cannot utilize the National Guard in any sense. Um, they're, my understanding is they're immediately deactivated because the activation provision is in a separate section of law and that's directly tied to Executive Order 2020 dash 03. Um, and as well as that activation and everything else that went through the process to get them activated, get the funding approved, get the FEMA, get the FEMA approval, get the NGB approval, get the orders published, would potentially have, more than likely have to start all over again, um, to get them going. Um, the Director had earlier mentioned the EMTs that were, that were hired to support vaccinations, that power for EMTs to give those vaccinations is specific and explicit to the Public Health Emergency Health Powers Act. That includes the National Guard medics. And so even if the National Guard were activated and the emergency health powers, but the emergency health powers were not active, those medics could not do vaccinations, um, and provide vaccinations to the community members, uh, which does present significant concerns as the recent approval of the booster for our Manomco was pushed out and we are trying to, um, reach out to 29,000 who are eligible.
Any comments, uh, public health or you share this?
Fernando is, uh, is in a, is as part of the public health and social services family team, management team, he is our incident commander, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, currently, the licensing requirements and fees for healthcare providers whose services are directed toward addressing the public health emergency are waived. How many health providers and professionals would be impacted? Do any one of you guys know? Or maybe you can get back?
Yeah, I have to get back to you. I know, uh, but, um, Vice Speaker, could you just, I'm not trying to take up your 15 minutes, but, only because you're clearly claiming it back. But, um, you're asking, just I'm clear, the amount of dollars we waive for license?
No, how many healthcare providers and professionals, but, you know, folks would be impacted? And, and what would that financial impact be also? Maybe for both? So maybe you can get back to us on that?
Yes, well, we'll have to get back to you then, Madam.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I want, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, if I may, I just want to note to the panel that I know that the Guam Emergency Health Power, Powers Act states that should the governor's state of emergency be terminated by the legislature, the legislature must include the pertinent conditions that justify such termination. Uh, so I want to ask the panel, in your expert opinions, in terms of public health, GMH, DOA, homeland security, are there reasonable scientific facts, data or evidence to justify the ending? And, uh, I, I want to preface this by saying I'm asking this because I'm not a doctor. I have no public health ex, I am no public health expert. I'm not a financial expert and I'm not a lawyer and I do not know the intricacies with regard to the FEMA policies, the Stafford Act and how that impacts reimbursement. So I don't want to end up like, uh, different governors around the country where we don't get reimbursed because political agendas get in the way and we add an additional financial burden to the taxpayers. So I know there was some answer earlier about some reimbursement that wasn't given back, so this is why I'm asking this question to any of the panel members and any one of you can start, jump in.
Madam Vice Speaker, maybe I can jump in on one of the points here. All the money that we receive from federal sources, whether it's a grant, an advanced funding like ARPA or a FEMA reimbursement, they're all subject to federal review under the single audit. So the, there are some implications, um, in, in the wording of this resolution that somehow we're avoiding, um, regulation, uh, by, by extending this public health emergency. All federal funds are treated the same and it's been made quite clear to us by OMB that there is no federal funding that is exempted from this particular requirement except for the free supplies that we get, uh, from, mainly from CMS. That we're not necessarily accountable for those, but we are accountable for all costs that we incur, um, towards, uh, federal funding. And that itself requires that we follow not only federal rules, but we have to follow our local rules and regulations in order to basically pass the muster on, on that, um, single audit when it, um, when, when a program is subject to it. And, and all the programs that, that we've been mentioning here are reported on the SEFA, which is the listing of, of federal programs and are subject to audit and some of them are being audited.
Homeland or anyone, you guys have any thoughts? Oh, public health?
Vice Speaker, with, with all due respect, I think I'd ask if I could reserve comment on this because it really would call for a broader discussion internally within public health and social services from both our subject matter experts and our physicians as well. But I do want to leave this in, in my response to you, Madam Vice Speaker, is that if we look at just a recent article, Philadelphia becomes the first major U.S. city to reinstate its indoor mask mandates as cases rise, and that's the April 11th. Then you go to an email, our CDC mask order remains in effect, and that's on April 13. And then on April 14, we're getting this from the ASPR group, uh, that they are extending the public health emergency of the nation. And, and then we still have WHO that we have yet to get a sense of where they're at on this matter as well. So it seems like there is this calmness and we do have a high vaccination rate and for that we thank the many people in Guam that have come out and gotten vaccinated, but the storm isn't over. We just don't know whether, it seems to that there's a calm right now and I would just be concerned to do anything without looking out a couple of weeks out and really getting data in from CDC, WHO and any other reputable organization that provides us data of what's happening because we all know this, travel has reopened and the virus can continue to spread, the transmission spreads through our travelers and we're not faulting any one person, it's just the process, it's just the reality, it's really what happens. The mask mandate on the aircraft is going to continue to May 3rd and so I just say we look at those pieces of information, what's happening and that, that can actually come back on our shores. And so that's all I would say, but I, I could definitely, um, work with our team, uh, and our epidemiologists to have that conversation and, and we can share that conversation at a later time if it's agreeable with you, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Director. Um, Senator Stavis?
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Um, for me, it's a, a little differently. So, um, I look at the operational data and I use that as my guiding principle. My end date is not the end of the public health emergency. My end date is, is really is, as, for me, is as soon as possible. And what I mean by that is, as much as possible based on the data and the trends, the operational data and trends, right? Is to transition public health's COVID-19 response into something that's sustainable for public health without the aid of all the external resources. That is my main goal as the incident commander, is to put myself out of a job. That's what I'm, my, this job that I have to do, that's what, that's my intent, is to be done with this. Now, in order to do this, if you look, tomorrow is the last day for all of our FEMA resources. So all the, the nurses and, um, nursing resources that FEMA provided for the vaccine clinics and for the monoclonal site, that ends tomorrow. Next, in terms of that transition, which is reverse of our ramp up, would be the National Guard, which I have targeted for the end of May, no later than the mid-June. And by then, subsequently improving our, our public health resources, making sure all the grants that are meant to sustain these operations in the long term are fully up and running. And that takes time, Madam, uh, Madam Vice Speaker, as we're still responding actively in just recently with the Omicron surge, right? And so my timeline is to get us into a steady state with, um, contingencies for a surge that does not, that's not necessarily tied to- That does not, that's not necessarily tied to the ending of the public health emergency. And again, my biggest concern with Resolution 291 is, is my transition plan to get us there is, is going to be severely impacted if I was, if the entire response was just cut off at the knees.
Thank you. Attorney, Deputy Attorney General, any thoughts or comments?
No, Madam Vice Speaker, we defer to the agencies.
Thank you. Okay, I think this next one, and then I'll take a break, Madam Chair, is, will the healthcare facilities such as the Guam Regional Medical City, GRMC, and clinics lose immunity when providing support to the Department of Public Health in dealing with COVID-19? If this was terminated? I guess, you know, what, what are the implications if the immunity is lost? I know you guys have agreements and things to that nature. Or would you like to look into it and get back to me later?
Yes, yes, Madam Vice Speaker, I mean, that, that is a question that's come up, and, and I think that's definitely more, it's going to require a little bit more legal research. There are a couple of different layers of protection, but how they're all implemented and, and made available, and when they apply is, is definitely a question for, that we can request to possibly the Attorney's General's office to, to put the research in that. But that only recently became a concern, I, I do want to state that for the record, with the, with the, with the presentation of this resolution, because while we were busy managing the response efforts, we didn't consider, you know, having to research whether we have to extend the immunity past this, because we were, we just got out of our Omicron surge.
Okay, and then just one, one more before the next round. Will COVID-19 differential pay for the first responders be eliminated? And will first responders be expected to continue to respond to COVID-related issues without differential pay? Public Health, I guess, or incident commander, even, even DOA for that matter?
That is, of course, a matter for the governor to determine, but up to now, they've kind of gone hand in hand. It's up to her to, to determine whether and to whom COVID-related pay should continue to be paid.
Interesting. Yes, Director Sinagastin?
Yes, I, I just wanted to go back to a comment I made earlier, I, I just got this, and I appreciate the staff as they're watching us as well and really helping us here. Want to thank them, we have the World Health Organization, and so they do have an official statement also, and they are also extending the public health emergency, so.
They're extending?
Yes, they've already, yes. I've got this just from one of our staff. It's, on Monday, April 11, the International Health Regulations Emergency Committee on the Coronavirus Pandemic met and unanimously agreed to extend the public health emergency. WHO accepted the recommendation, so we're just sharing that with the body in terms of my earlier statements, looking at what is happening here, but also throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Incident?
Yes, Madam Vice Speaker, I got an answer to your question. At least in our local statute, Section 19804, under Chapter 19, with regards to private liability for, so any of the, any of the clinics or hospitals aiding our public health response are protected under Chapter 19 if they are part of the government response with, with anything relative to COVID-19. And so that would end with the ending of the resolution.
Ending, right. That will end with the ending of?
Will end, yes.
Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, just want to say thank you. I know I still have some minutes left. If I have any more, I'll wait to the second and third round. Thank you very much to the panel members. Thank you very much for answering at least each of the questions, so give me a better understanding on how we should proceed with this. So thank you, Madam Chair, Sinamasi.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In debating or considering of ending the public health emergency, I think this is something we really have to have our eyes wide open, right? So there's several things that I, you know, several questions that I have. One of them is, you know, the state of the pandemic worldwide, and the question is, are we out of the woods? And there's this overarching question, when does a pandemic become an endemic, right? Are the numbers there to show that? Guam has been in a situation before where we were in a public health emergency, and perhaps this question is for the Director of Department of Public Health, again, Sinagastin, sorry. So maybe if you can relate any kind of a, I guess, information to us, or provide any information in regards to when, when does the Department of Public Health come to that conclusion that we are an endemic?
Director Sinagastin, can I ask a question?
Thank you very much. To Senator Sabina Harris, with regards to your question, it's, it's really not primarily just a local decision. This is going to be a decision that is going to be based on where we are, just not here in Guam, but even from the CDC perspective, because we're, this is not an isolated Guam situation. So we are looking to our, our agencies that monitor what is going on with COVID-19, so we're looking at WHO for reference and information and data. We go to CDC as well. So we're looking at these agencies, and we are really, in the most part, aligning up with where CDC is at. So as you know, CDC puts out the guidance, for example, mask wearing, vaccines, and all that, so we would also be following suit. But as we follow suit, we're applicable and reasonable because we also need to look at our local situation. You may have a situation in which there's a low number of positive cases. Well, I was just on a call, gosh, this morning, on, on a, on a SNAP conference call, and one of our neighboring islands, oh, gosh, do you remember, was it American Samoa? Yeah, I, I just want to share this with you because it's just a matter of perspective. I believe it's American Samoa, they are just now having their first case of cases. And so that just tells you what can happen, and so it'd be premature for me to say that when we hit these marks, because as we hit these marks, these marks can change overnight. We may have a mad rush of positives, we may have a surge of the healthcare system at the hospitals. So it's one of those things that we have to continue to monitor through surveillance and science and data that we would have to base our decision, but we'd also be looking to WHO and CDC for guidance on that.
Okay, and you just relayed the information that the CDC extended the public health emergency, or was it the WHO?
W, both. WHO, they have a committee, and they've adopted the committee's recommendation to extend the public health emergency, and I understand it's going to be reviewed within 90 days, but we also have the Health Secretary who extended the public health emergency effective April 16, out for 90 days. And so we have these two organizations that we, we work with, and we collaborate with in sense of getting information and data and guiding us in our decision-making process, and also working with our local subject matter experts and our physicians in what our next steps would be in terms of our response and recovery.
Okay, thank you for that response. Yeah, that's one of the considerations that I have, and including the, the healthcare capacity of our island since the beginning of the pandemic, has our healthcare capacity increased dramatically to, you know, should a public health emergency be, be ended? Are you confident about the healthcare capacity of our island to absorb a surge, a potential surge?
No, no, absolutely not. I mean, we were not in a position to absorb the surge the first time. We were always using travel nurses even before we began. I completely understand this is a perennial problem that, you know, public health and we're not going to solve overnight, truly, but the short answer is no. And, and that's, that's a concern. Now, by no means, by no means, I want me to be clear, am I saying that we need to have the public health emergency forever because we're never going to be ready? The, the reality is, we're going to be as ready as we possibly can and as reasonably can, can be, given all the considerations and our circumstances here on this island and our, our unique healthcare challenges. And that's where partnership and creative thinking are really going to come into play. But again, to reiterate, no.
If I may, Senator, if I may, Senator Perez, getting information here, and so with the public health emergency in terms of healthcare providers, we stand to lose 167 under the public health emergency status. And, and I echo Incident Commander Fernando Estevas's comment with regards to travel nurses, that's a clear indication of our capacity or lack thereof. We wouldn't be reaching out to travel nurses if we had local capacity just within our own resources. And so, as he said, it's, it's a perennial situation that we need to continue to work through and build our local capacity. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the number of beds to address a surge, has it grown?
Senator, our challenge has never been the beds. We can expand that in many different ways. Our number one challenge and is, is, I can't, I can't stress how much it was exacerbated, has been the competition globally for healthcare personnel. There's, there's no point to have a bed and, and have it fully stocked if you have no people to run it. And that, that by no means is, is saying that we're not going to expand our capability in terms of bed capacity, but we have to do it judiciously and just also kind of understand what our, our needs are, and then also share and understand that we're probably never going to fill and fill those beds to capacity in terms of staffing. And so whenever we consider beds, the, the, the key terminology is staffed beds. They're very different things. Capacity for, physical capacity versus staffed capacity. And that's, that's the main thing that we need to focus on. And then even with the staffed capacity, as part of surge planning, you have to consider alternative standards of care, which is when you stretch your nurse-to-patient ratios so that that same, those same personnel can treat more people, right? And that's, that's, that's a situation we've rarely had to extend to. But the main goal again is always that somebody has had a bed and we have had, that's been accomplished. Someone has had a bed and someone has had somebody there to take care of them.
Just judging from your experience, so what level of healthcare capacity do we need to absorb any surge? Is there a target that you have in mind?
It, surge is, is a tricky word, right? I know, I know, and they, and I'll give you two examples, Senator. Delta versus Omicron. Delta was more severe, and it was more, it was more transmissible than the Alpha, Alpha variant and the ancestral strain that we had here, right? And that presented different challenges, because we had people who were getting sick, and they were getting very sick. That drained healthcare resources in one capacity. Then we had Omicron, which presented a different challenge set, which was closer, closer, more closely resembled to measles, where it was a matter of pure numbers, where because we had so many COVID positives, it overwhelmed us, it was starting to, going to overwhelm us in different ways, whether that's the loss, that's the negative balance of personnel due to illness, and then also the sheer number of patients coming in because, because of the virus, even though they weren't severely ill, but because of their, their situation, because of maybe other underlying health conditions, met eligibility or met admission criteria. So it's hard to pinpoint and just say, are we ready for a surge, right? Because the surge could present, and the challenges that the surge present can present different faces, right? Different operating challenges and operating considerations. So the strategy is really to kind of build our overall capacity and our inner working relationships, right, with the lessons that we've learned from this pandemic, whether that be how we better improve our public-to-private partnership, whether that be the potential like autonomous line agencies to procure services through the regular procurement process before an emergency, just in case something were to hit. So there are many ways we're preparing for a surge with our healthcare system. I know it's a long-drawn-out answer, but it's not a simple one, Senator, and I'm always willing and available if you ever want to sit down and have further discussion.
Okay, thank you. And in regards to procurement, you mentioned that, how would this affect, if ending a public health emergency, how would that affect procurement of, let's say, vaccinations? Anything, any kind of materials that were needed to address a public health emergency? What impact would that have?
Senator, at least on the, the public health side, what I can say is, we've never utilized the powers for procurement under Chapter 19. We've always used either standard procurement or existing emergency procurement procedures, I believe, under Chapter 5. So the, this resolution would not affect our ability to procure.
In regards to costs, would that affect the cost?
The, so the vaccines don't cost us anything, Senator.
And ending the public health emergency, would that have a cost?
In terms of vaccinations and medications, no, those, those will still be provided.
So the other thing is the, the fiscal impacts. I'm not sure I have a complete picture of the fiscal impact, and I think that information is still, you know, I guess, needs to be researched. You know, we, we have several agencies here, but we don't have the full complement of agencies. For instance, Department of Education. Do we know what the impact would be to Department of Education should the public health emergency end? I guess nobody's here to represent them at this time. But that's something that I think we're missing with this committee in the whole, is, you know, getting some sort of overall fiscal note from each of the agencies. How would that impact them, should it impact them? Okay, I guess another question, maybe this for Assistant Attorney General Mendiola. So should the public health emergency end, what does that do to, I guess, all the executive orders? Would that nullify all the, the, I guess, the, the actions by those executive orders? Would they end immediately? Pertaining to the public health emergency?
Thank you, Senator. I'm not sure I could answer that specifically relative to all of the provisions of all of the executive orders. I imagine if the public health emergency were to end, then all of the exercised authorities through the EOs that the governor has taken, specific to her Emergency Health Powers Act authority, would then end, or her organic act authority. But I, I don't even know what EO number we're on now. Different actions and different EOs are sometimes pegged to different parts of the law, so if different actions under those EOs are not pegged to the exercise of her Emergency Powers Act, then those would probably remain in place.
And, yeah, I guess that leads to the question about, you know, what is, what would that, what impact would that have, if we have a full picture of, of what that would be? So that's my, my concerns, whether those questions can be, you know, answered or concerns be answered. You know, like I said, we have to have our eyes wide open on this. All right, so thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Tidigui, do you have any questions at this time for the panel?
Mrs. Masim, Madam Chair. Yes, I do. Mr. Cruz, you mentioned earlier that there was $103 million worth of funds that you have, that you're responsible for, yet you're saying 16 million of that, of grant funding, you, you may lose. And it was brought up earlier, there's nothing in black and white with regards to that. So can you give me an example of one of those, one, a part of the 60 million dollar grant, the process in which you will apply for? How would, how would be that process?
Many of the large projects are probably would Guam Memorial Hospital, Public Health, and Homeland Security. Case in point, one project would be the contract nursing, that's in several million dollars, and there's many different projects in that. So those things have started out in the grant portos, and they haven't completed the process of loading all the documents, so that, that's money that could, could be potentially lost if it hasn't.
Okay, potentially, but earlier you said you're going to lose it, so what is it? Is it potential, or are you going to lose it?
Well, that, that would be up to FEMA, how, how to determine that. So I can't answer for FEMA.
And as long as the US is in a national state of, well, you know, what do they call it? The national emergency state, a, a national emergency declaration, as long as the United States is in that, then the opportunities for us to receive these grants are very viable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So FEMA, who's talked, let me go to, just try to go down the line, again, or now that Mr. Sinagastin is here, are you familiar with Title 10, Chapter 3, Article 3, with regards to disease controls? And that this particular section of the law allows the governor to actually create, go into a state of emergency on particular diseases? Are you familiar with that chapter in the law?
I have to review that, ma'am.
Okay, well, let me help you.
Sure.
In that law, it states all, everything from typhoid fever to yellow fever to tuberculosis. And then it says in 70, "Any other disease deemed by the director to be dangerous to the public health may be added by regulation. In the event of any severe communicable diseases with a pandemic potential which is identified and declared by the US Senators of CDC to be critically dangerous to the public health and safety." And it goes on and talks about any other type, because this particular section talks about certain diseases, but then it allows you on, on 70 and 71 for something like the pandemic. So in the past, the governors have created a declaration of a state of emergency. They have done that in this particular chapter, which is Title 10, Chapter 3, Article 3. So if you're not even familiar with this, then I think you should be, because if this resolution passes, this is an option to try and save SNAP. In other words, you will need a declaration of emergency and this, along with the report that you provide, the federal government monthly and attach that executive order declaration, you can also attach this declaration quoting this particular section of the law. In other words, there is an option for the governor. But it's obviously you don't, you're not familiar with that. So that could help SNAP. We can actually get that through that declaration. You can still provide one.
I would have to look at that legislation because if this is the same legislation.
No, it's the law. It's the law in this chapter.
Well, this chapter, this same chapter that we were taking to court, it actually has a loophole in it that we have to, that we no longer reference it in the public health emergency. So I do need to go back with legal and review that with them because.
Yes, please.
When we were taken to court, there was one piece that was cited and it was ruled that we need to remove that basically, because it's not intended for the virus like COVID-19. And this is the one that will do the other diseases like maybe measles and other diseases, if that's the section you're speaking of.
And at any time, the governor can call a stint of session on any bill or that needs to adjust to make those adjustments on this particular law. Going to the Attorney General's office, let's go to procurement that was asked earlier. When we are in this particular, using the, let me go back to that. Right now, we are in the emergency, hold on, this is procurement. It stated early that, earlier from Senator Esteviz, that they have used procurement under chapter five, if I'm not mistaken. And under this particular chapter 19 that the governor has, has put us in, hold on, the Emergency Procurement Act of chapter 19. We know that your side, Fernando, that you mentioned that you haven't used any of those emergency procurements, you've gone to chapter five. Now, using the, this particular procurement on the emergencies in chapter 19, the governor does not have to basically, you know, provide all that information or transparency based on the emergency we're in right now under chapter 19, the emergency procurement. However, if you read the law in chapter five, there are mechanisms and processes of transparency whenever she uses that authority, or any agency uses that authority. But in chapter 19, would you, could you say, based on what you know now, that there are no transparency, there are no processes in place, she can just go out and do anything she wants on an emergency?
Thank you, Senator. Well, two, two parts to that. First, my reading of the procurement, the procurement powers under chapter 19, provide that power and authority to the public health authority, not the governor of Guam. That's, that's my understanding. The second part of that, Senator, is that you are correct, chapter five, even through emergency procurement, does still require the complete procurement record. And that is one of the reasons why, at least to my knowledge and anything within my purview that I've participated in or assisted on, has, has never utilized the procurement powers or authorities or sought to use them under chapter 19. One of the things about that is.
But that's only under you, right? That's just you?
Correct.
Okay. Not the governor or other agencies. I just want to make that clear.
Senator, could I also respond to that, please?
Oh, okay. Which one wants to go? You're going to yield? You're going to yield? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Director Byrne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My preference, and I know this isn't the case, that all the procurement regulations are wrapped up into, into chapter five. And it's, there are procurement regulations spread over the code that makes it very difficult to operate it rationally. However, to my knowledge, there is no procurement record that has addressed any procurement under chapter 19. And it's all been under the chapter five regulations, as Senator Esteviz stated previously.
Okay, so DOA has not gone, used the Emergency Powers Act at all?
No. I can't tell, I can't speak for agencies that are not under the cover of GSA, but for all the GSA type of procurements, and that covers public health, of course. None have been other than chapter five.
Okay. But you're not sure, right? It's just under your department, under what's under you, but you're not sure, right?
No, I'm sure about, about what, about GSA.
GSA, no, I know you're about GSA, but the other agencies.
What I'm not sure about is the other agencies that GSA does not operate, such as the airport, the port, that have their own procurement processes. I can't answer for that.
But do you agree, Mr. Burns, that under the Emergency Powers Act, that any kind of procurement you, being used, is not as transparent or accountable as if you're under chapter five? And you don't need to be in a public emergency to, to be able to utilize chapter five either, correct?
Chapter five is the regular procurement process.
Right, emergency. So we don't have to be in a state of emergency in order to use that, correct?
Well, as I stated earlier, you know, I'm very conscious that whatever we do is subject to audit. As I mentioned earlier, that if it's federal funding, and a lot of this is federal funding, it's subject to the single audit and we would be, a finding would, would appear in our report if we didn't follow the regular procurement requirements, because that's what's required by OMB.
Okay. Did you want to finish this, Mr. Esteviz, since, Senator?
No, that's, that's, I, I agree with, with the statement, I haven't seen us utilize chapter 19. I, I think one of the biggest issues was, was to your point, Senator, and where I agree, while chapter 19 does provide very broad procurement authority for the public health authority, not the governor, it doesn't provide or specify any type of left and right limitations. And I don't think any of us, you know, I should, actually, I shouldn't speak subjectively. I wouldn't have felt comfortable procuring in, in that type of environment.
Okay.
And so even though it was to our detriment and sometimes caused additional time, we procure it under chapter five.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Esteviz. I was, sorry, I thought the AG could answer that, but that's okay. Back to the public health. In, in chapter 19, Article 2, there's a section there, 19202, Public Health Emergency Plan. And in this, since it was implemented back in March, it says, A, content, the commission shall, within six months of its appointment, deliver to Imaga Hagan Guahan, a plan for responding to public health emergency that includes provisions or guidelines on the following. Are you familiar with this section of chapter 19, Mr. Sinagastin?
Yes, I am, Senator.
And has it been implemented? This, you were given six months to deliver to the Imaga Hagan a plan for responding to the public health emergency. Has that plan been provided to the governor?
What we have, ma'am, at this time is a pandemic plan that's being updated.
It's been two years and you still haven't done this yet?
This is a commission, ma'am, that is appointed by.
Wow.
The governor.
So under chapter 19, this is the one that the governor's following to a T, but yet this section of the law has not even been adhered to up to this T. It's been two years, so for the record, it's noted. Mr. Burns, if this public health emergency ended, well, the funding that was provided to Guam through ARP funding or COVID or the infrastructure money that's being brought to Guam, is that all going to be taken away?
Well, that would be an awful thought, that any money was taken away.
Right.
But, but no.
It won't, right?
No.
Okay, so there's no fear.
ARP money and infrastructure money comes under separate federal legislation.
Okay. Mr. Esteviz, you talked about the governor's, what she has, the authority she has as the ex officio commander in chief for Guam for the National Guard. If I'm not mistaken, based on a, some information that was provided to me on the National Guard, the, which National Guard deployment extended to support COVID-19 response, and it also said that, "To date, the president has approved 48 states and three territorial National Guard requests for federal support to the National Guard through April 1st, 2022." You mentioned something earlier, that something is going to expire tomorrow, but based on this information I received, it, it actually expired on April 1st, 2022. Can you?
It was extended to July, to July 1st. And that's just the funding source?
For the National Guard.
For the, for the National Guard, for the states. Yes, just the funding, just the funding. The federal government does not, or they can, but in this instance, they have, the federal government does not activate the National Guard.
No, that's the governor's response, yeah.
Yes.
So the governor, even if we were not in a state of an emergency or any such, based on a section of law regarding the Emergency Powers Act, public health, there's a section here that gives the authority to the governor as a, ex officio commander in chief to activate the National Guard on Guam. Not to deploy them or anything, but just activate them on Guam. And you don't have to be in a state of emergency in order to do that, based on, I'm trying to find the, the law right now, but go ahead and explain that again, because it's making it sound like we have to be in a state of emergency.
I, I'll pull up the, the section of law.
Do you have it here?
Thirty seconds, I had it right.
Okay, so I got this.
Senator, in Guam 10 GCA, section 63500, it requires an emergency declaration be put in order for the National Guard to be activated. I apologize if I use the word to deploy. It's synonymous with activate. It means mobilized. It means they're taken from their civilian status and they're put on an active status or duty status, not an active status necessarily. I, I don't know which section you're referring to, but on the section that, that we have been, I've been discussing and referencing and discussing with our, our partners, the only section for the authorization of the Guam National Guard is in chapter 10, I want to say, 10 GCA, section 63500. It's not organic. It's specific to Gov Guam law.
Right, so the governor still can call in the National Guard to assist them. It's about the funding, right? And, and the governor received funding?
No, 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 Senator. We don't receive funding for the National Guard.
No, no, no. I'm saying that the governor has the authority to activate the guard in order to do, administer anything, what they've been doing at UOG, what they were doing at TGen, you know, to assist public health, right? The only thing is that the payment to the National Guard has to come from somewhere for these individuals being activated to serve on Guam, right? Right now, you're using FEMA funding to secure that, that, those payments, correct?
Well, we actually don't secure, because of the presidential declaration.
Right.
They're paid directly from the federal government under section 502F.
Okay.
That includes even housing allowance, like they were, they were on Title 10 status, active duty.
Okay, just stick, Fernando, please, just stick to the, the answer.
Okay.
So funding for the National Guard, when they're activated at TGen of University of Guam, who's paying for that?
The federal government.
Okay. If the emergency declaration, or if this, if we lifted, or this resolution passes, then will we lose funding to pay for those individual servicemen?
There would be no one to pay.
There'd be no one to pay?
Correct.
How is that possible when the governor has authority as the commander in chief?
Because the resolution 291 ends her, stops her authority and the activation, the current activation.
Oh, okay, so all she needs is an executive order?
No.
In order to?
No, no, the law, Gov Guam law, 10 GCA, specifically says the governor can only activate them in a state of emergency. So this would end the, the public health emergency and in theory, if I'm understanding your correction, question correctly, would have to do another state of emergency to reactivate them.
Okay, let me read this to you real quick. Activate service authority of governor to order that the commander in chief may, in, in time of war, any rebellion or imminent danger thereof, or in a time of any state emergency, order the National Guard, okay, so in any imminent danger, guard or any part thereof, and to activate military service for the territory of Guam, except when such members of the National Guard are already in the service of the United States. The governor may also order the Guam National Guard or any other part thereof, a territory active duty to assist the government of Guam in affairs of state, state ceremonies or other territory activities or duties as determined by the governor. That's what the law says. And, you know, Mr. Senator Esteviz, it's clear that she is the commander in chief here on this island when it comes to that, and she can deploy, and not deploy, but activate any of these National Guards to provide the services. My concern is if, if FEMA is not there to cover this amount, then there is ARP funding that's available for the governor to cover any kind of funding that's needed to move forward. But I think, and my time is almost up, so, well, we'll talk about this offline, but the way you see it, we need a balance here. And that balance is to bringing back some type of normalcy. You know, we can't rebuild our community, our economy, or bring the spirit back into our community when we're stuck and held down to the ground like this. We've had enough vaccines and booster shots and everything that the, you know, the island has given our island to, to start up again, to start moving in another direction. But it still gives the authority for the governor to do several things, and that is to narrow down the scope of her emergency. And come out of chapter 19, the Emergency Powers Act, and use another mechanism that's narrower to address the concerns that we have. I think we have some concerns with not having enough of the information to provide this body from those who are sitting up today who's supposed to be prepared, to give us everything in black and white, to show us exactly where it says the United States will never, not give us, or, you know, the federal government will not give us any money if we, we stop the Emergency Powers Act. if we, we stop the Emergency Powers Act declaration. SNAP can also receive some of the, the funding, and there are ways to do that as well, to try and save the SNAP funding. And if not, then we have ARP funding. There's still $385 million unspent from ARP funding. And you're saying it's gonna, if we go another seven, I'm sorry, 90 days, it'll be about $7 million we'll lose, then we've got that ARP money to cover it? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, can I ask everybody in the panel, can you stand up and stretch for about 10 seconds? Go ahead. If you want to stand up and stretch, because you've been sitting there for quite some time, before I get started. No? Okay, Tess, I won't ask the question till you come back. Can, for, for, for the panel, Madam Chair, can we just-
All right, we'll take a one-minute recess for the panel to take a short break.
Thank you. You can thank me later after I question you guys.
We're back from recess. Senator Blas, you have the floor. Oh, timeout, his microphone fell down. All right, Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Uh, before I move on, I speak with consideration about taking a lunch break.
Motion? Are you making a motion?
Making a motion. And we-
There's a motion to recess until-
Two.
2:00 PM. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. If I could ask the panel to please return at 2:00 PM?
Yes, please, all of you.